The zoning commission, regular meeting of December 5th, 2022. And despite of that thing is the zoning commission.
It confused me, Dave.
But we are being included to a presentation on the plan of construction development. So George, I thought you.
Just the button on the side, on the top.
Chairman, I'm Glenn, Glenn Chalder and Aaron Levitt Smith.
Zero, zero. And then you hit the arrow. No, no, no.
You were.
Yeah, it's check, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you want to say who you are? Are you my?
Yes.
Ms. Glenn Scholder is a consultant for the town by the way, the planning commission. And Aaron Levitt Smith, our chairman of the planning commission. Take it away.
Well, I recognize a number of faces here at the table. My name is Glenn Scholder. I've been a Simsbury resident for an awfully long time, but my profession is I'm also a planning and development consultant. I work with towns around the state on zoning regulations and plans of conservation and development, and I've had the distinct pleasure of working with the town of Simsbury on the last two plans of conservation and development. I don't want to speak for the planning commission, but recently the realization occurred that the current plan is five years old. Normally, the update cycle is 10 years in length, but so much has happened in the last five years. We never saw a pandemic coming. What's happened with people working out of their homes these days as opposed to going to office buildings, the changes in retail, some of the ways that our community and the region have grown and changed resulted in a situation that we felt it was time to re-look at the plan, make sure we're on the right pathway for Simsbury. So we're undertaking this effort to update the plan. We are undertaking a community survey right now. It's accessible on the town website, so if you get a chance or rather than listen to us in the audience, go to the survey, please. Give us your thoughts and input. We're anticipating a public meeting in January after the New Year, and we'll be working on the plan through the spring and summer with the goal of adopting it roughly in early fall, we hope, of next year. And the simple reason that we're here tonight is to reach out to the zoning commission because we think that the input and guidance and assistance and working as a team is going to make a better plan for Simsbury overall, and we're looking to do that. So, but that'll just turn over to Aaron real quick in case there's anything else you want to say.
Well, I thank you for letting us speak today. I really want to reach out to the zoning commission because we really would like to meet with you because as we're doing the P O C D, we don't want to put things in the P O C D and then for you guys to see it and say, where did this come from? I don't agree with it, right? Because we're going to hold your feet to the fire. So we really would like to have you come, meet with us jointly. We want to hear what you think is important and what we both think are important to put in the P O C D so that we both can be kind of helping each other. And Glenn's going to help us with this revision to, for us to really be looking at this at least on a quarterly basis. So as we put in our goals, we're actually revisiting and making sure we're doing what we said we'd like to do in the P O C D and that we're helping, you know, our other commissions help us do that as well. So I hope that we can schedule something soon, and we look forward to doing that with you.
So I think tonight, just here again to tell you that the process is starting. We'll look forward to working with you and look forward to a very productive and successful plan for what we all consider to be a very successful community. So again, we look forward to working with you. George, anything else you want to add?
If you haven't taken the survey, take the survey. Send it to friends and family. We have had really quite a good response. Today will go for about another three weeks to January 1st. I think we're just about close to 500 responses, which is fabulous.
That's great.
Which is really great response rate. So we'll again another 10 days or so, we'll try to push it out one more time, or hopefully we can get. Any more questions?
And it doesn't take long to do.
That takes about 11 minutes.
Oh, it took you that long, George? So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Come back again.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, we have skipped a few things. We don't need any alternates because we have a full slate of hope used. And first order of business is the improvement of events of November 21st, 2022.
Thank you. I think Jackie's going to close there. Thank you, Jackie.
Jackie's taking care of it. Sorry to be rude. Good title for her. Okay, any comments on the minutes as they were posted?
Is 5:01 maybe we have spoken?
One minute session?
Okay. Well, because it is 5:01, I was wondering, I said, well, in the picture there are some people that told us.
They would be responding, describe that.
Sorry, but did I make that one change?
It doesn't matter, it's only got four.
No, it's just Brett funny, right? It's like 5:01.
Well, let me just ask a question, George. I'm looking at how condensed those remarks are that were made by the town residents who came to speak to us. I'm wondering, how does this work? Do you want to reveal in the future the information that came to us? And do we have to watch it on camera a few times?
We have to record it.
Okay. So in the future, we're going to continue to see those public hearings, one or two sounds saying that the residents were here.
So, no, we can certainly react to your wishes and add additional level if that's important to me. Again, it's not intended to be a verbatim undertaking. It's not, that's why we have.
I know, but I can remember here it's going, I can't remember last month, but we have the names of the people who spoke. They will be recorded in minutes as well as some condensed statement about their comments and something around that. So maybe it's, I'm not going to interrupt this process, but maybe we should talk about that in the future because if I'm the only one who's concerned about it, I have to watch it.
Oh, I wonder who played within the panel, who was, what was, what was that? We do that, I suppose, with the intel council and the, it's definitely with the.
The guidance is, the guidance is is what we're trying to action.
It's a little, well, Robert's rules, of course, that says that you record the votes and who would be, would be, actually was. Robert's rule specifically says it's not a transcript because a transcript tends to.
I said, I've read Robert's rules too, I'm aware of that. That was never the tradition of the press here before. That doesn't mean we can't ever change.
I looked up the minutes of 1966 when Jim Gallagher first started to find out when it started. There were 63 pages on that one set of minutes because they had a public hearing the month of 2nd morning, and they recorded every resident's comment. And I'm sure every resident was happy, but it can get out of hand. So we have, we have as a commission adopted, record the minutes, or record the motions, record the essence of what people say, but not a verbatim transcript.
So Dave, maybe somewhere between where we are now and the 63 pages?
63.
63.
Well, we can.
I could have verbatim.
Anyway, if you have concern about what was said, I don't know what you said, Bruce, because I, you were addressing him and I couldn't hear. Can you repeat what you said?
I'm not going to make an issue here today, Dave. I was suggesting that we might talk about this at a future meeting, but for today, I would have motioned to approve the minutes as they were submitted.
Okay. Give us a second.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Nick Carey, 600. Thank you. Next order of business is public hearings. We have three public hearings. The first two are special exceptions for applicants. So first one, Mr. Vice Chairman, can you review this?
Application 22-38 of J and P McKenna, applicant TJ Donahue, junior agent for a special exception pursuant to section 4.5 of the Simsbury zoning regulation to permit a private driving school at the property located at 571 Hop Meadow Street, access map G12, block 103, lot 038, zone P O.
Thank you. Is there someone here who will present the application? Mr. Donahue?
Mr. Chairman, first may I give the staff the receipt for the update on the sign posting? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I represent the owner of the building. I'd like you to know that Paul McKenna is here, he's a Simsbury resident, the orthodontist in town. And also Angela Brooks, who owns and operates the driving school, which is going to operate in the building. Like you to make just a note that within the last year, the McKennas have bought that building and made a very significant investment in it inside and out, and it's one of those very neat buildings on Main Street in Simsbury, so it's a very attractive investment for the town. In my hand, I have Mr. McGregor's staff report. We think it's complete. We agree with everything in it, and we are very hopeful that you'll adopt it. We have the two applicants here who would like to answer any questions that you have.
The ones in the, in our documentation, the parking lot, I think that's the only question that you have.
I drove by, I was looking earlier. So where, the driveway's on the, because Hop Meadows on the front, right here, right? Ah, there you go. So is that the driveway, that gray whatever?
That's the driveway for the.
Okay, all right.
It goes into the parking lot, it's in the rear.
Yeah, okay.
So is that adequate parking with what they presented? Or?
So parking, parking is, this was originally built using professional office standards. I think originally there were 19, I think over time with a deck and stairway built, that took one away. So it was 18, 18 spaces. Our sense from the description by the applicant in terms of hours of operation and how it doesn't conflict with the three days a week of the orthodontist, and there's no specific standard in your zoning regulations for private driving school. There's no standard for it, so I think it's, it's our job to review. If you apply to all of the professional office standard, we require 21 spaces, so it would be short. So in that case, it's essentially a pre-existing non-conforming status there. Our estimation is that there's going to be plenty of parking in this location because of the nature of the business of individual lessons, three or four lessons, no group lessons at any time. So yeah, I think we're satisfied with this outcome based on that.
Is that a change, the no classes? Because there used to be the parent class over on West Street, and that, you know, it was very full those nights because you have all the parents, you know.
That is a change.
Right, so they don't do that anymore?
They don't do that anymore.
And that's not going to go back? Like that's not a COVID thing that's going to turn back at some point?
No, no, we're staying on Zoom.
Please note that's Angela Brooks. Identify yourself, please, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Angela Brooks, and I'm the owner. We have gone to Zoom, and the commissioner of the DMV has allowed us to stay on Zoom because of regulations through the state. So we have no intention of going back to in-person because it's so much more convenient for parents, for students, for us, so we're not going to deal with that crowdedness, the parents' class.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, that's good news.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So can we just go over any changes in the site plan that are going to happen?
If you look at the, your materials in the map and also the photo, the overhead photo, you can see that there's substantially no, no change to.
The revised site plan essentially labels additions, labels spaces for the, for the houses. There's no site change.
No site change.
I think that we did add a dumpster to a portion of the site, so there's no, nothing changes.
Parking doesn't change.
It's that, you have, I think there's. The existing foundation is looking at that.
Is the dumpster pad still over the line? In the, in the site plan, it was over the line. I think it was even addressed by.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's identified by, if that site plan, I think there's a chance that that pad may have been there.
I would, yes, it wasn't installed by us.
It's such an existing.
Probably, it may have a historic right to be there, but there's room to move it if we have to.
But how would we do that?
Okay, well, questions of the commission?
Yeah, I have one. I just want to, I know there's specific language drawing attention to the fact that we're applying standards for a school, and I'm not sure what they, how different they are from standards for an office space, but I'm just curious about handicap access. Whatever the handicap access requirements are for a school, are those the standards being applied to the space?
Is handicap accessible with the ramp, the full ramp in the bathrooms? Are handicap accessible?
Right, there's no elevator.
Correct, there's no elevator.
No elevator required.
But will be on the second floor? The school will be on the second floor or the orthodontist is on the second floor?
No, the school's on the.
School's on the second floor, but the, the actual interaction with the student is in the parking lot. The parent drops them off, they go to the car, and they go out on the road, and they come back and they leave.
So there's no classroom.
There's no classroom instruction in the facility.
Okay. Then office space for the driving school?
Yes.
And why aren't we doing it just as an office? It's not actually a school.
Wait, good point. Okay, I've heard enough.
And aren't dumpsters required to be surrounded?
During the site plan process, yeah, screening.
Yeah. So this is the site plan process.
So as part of that permitting process, we would have identified with the applicant and owner and prior occupancy, we would enforce.
Okay, so our, our motion should include that?
Might be a condition where we would apply, yes.
Anybody else? Melissa?
Not a stupid commission, can I make?
Oh, we're good.
I would just say, you know, all four of my kids have gone through Angela's school, and they're on the road, and it's all working out great, but I would just note that this is one of the really difficult turning in and turning out locations in town. I don't want to give a consideration to, you know, maybe the driving school could voluntarily only have kids turn right out of the parking lot, because it's a really dangerous, it's a really dangerous section of Hop Meadow. So it just makes me kind of nervous as a parent.
Because there's a curve.
Right, and there's two roads, because there's the.
Woodlands.
The, I can't think of the spinning.
I think he said Woodland.
Well, thank you, thank you. Exactly, Woodlands right there is the hill and the curve. It's really hard getting out of table 570 on the roadside, and it's right, it's, it's all about, so that might just be a.
Okay.
Did brackets or anything just went?
Spoken like a military man.
You know my kid. Right, turn home, please.
Danny? Other comments before I open up the public? Okay, public, anyone in the public here to speak to this application? Please come up, identify yourself in your address, and say your, please. Going once? Going twice? I guess there's no public comment on this application. Okay. You heard the motion to close.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing for application 22-38.
You're a second?
I'll second.
Second, Donna? Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain? You're a six, not a second. Public hearing is closed. Okay, Mr. Vice Chairman, could you read the call of the second?
Application 22-39 of Wolf Restaurant LLC, Helmar Roof, applicant agent for a special exception pursuant to section 6 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for site improvements at the property located at 4 Hartford Road, access map G15, block 145, lot 001, zone B1.
Thank you. Is there someone here to talk to?
Good evening, for the record. My name is Kevin Grindel, an associate with Barton Le Judice, civil site engineering firm representing the applicant this evening. Mr. Helmar Wolf is also with me this evening to ask any, or to answer any specific questions. He is the owner of the Abigail's Restaurant site that we'll be discussing. So as noted, the intent would be a special exception within the section 6, the flood plane regulations. What the plan for you provides is an outline on the upper left. There is an existing backup generator that we're proposing to relocate to the right-hand side, the smaller brown rectangle on the right-hand side of the existing building. We are proposing to make that, that modification to make way for a proposed outdoor cooler. The current cooler that's indoor to the building, Mr. Wolf is looking to relocate outside the building. It's a standalone, a freestanding exterior cooler, eight by 24, excuse me, eight by 22 in overall size. That photo there in the upper left is the current location behind that existing fence is the generator, and within the, within that, that footprint is where the outside cooler is looking to go. On what we're looking to do then is, and in the back, that bottom left is what the cooler would look like on that exterior shot. Looking to take the existing generator and put it again on the backside of that building, on the far side of the building, utilizing the existing building as screening, and that proposed location for the generator would also be going behind fencing adjacent to the current HVAC, effectively the mechanicals of the building. Those mechanicals would be replaced, making way for the generator to be relocated behind that existing fencing. Reason we're here before you this evening is the flood elevation with, on that site is mapped, so the 100-year flood elevation goes through the building. We were in front of you, I will say, one of my colleagues was in front of you back in 2017, where we identified the flood elevation to be different than the mapped location, thereby identifying the flood elevation as downstream downgrade into the existing parking lot. So the plan presented before you this evening with certification saying the generator and the cooler will be in fact outside or above the flood elevation on the site. However, once again, the existing mapped location is different than our surveyed 100-year flood elevation. Furthermore, what we're looking to do is identify again on that plan as the flood elevation or base flood elevation of a 159.7. We have stipulated on the plan that the generator will be located, the required two feet above that flood elevation, thereby the generator, bottom of the generator will be 161.7, and as you see on that upper left-hand plan, the parking lot on the lower side, that's the concern of the flood, is significantly lower than where the exterior cooler will be. Thereby, the exterior cooler location will be about five feet above that flood elevation. But just putting all those elevations on the plan, specifically on that blow-up on that right-hand side, but the plan as well as the required certificate, the flood plane no impact certification that we've also been, that we've also provided the town, we believe it's, it's a, it's a, it's a very good use of location in regards to consolidating the HVAC components and mechanicals, relocating the generator to be consistent with the mechanical location of the building. And again, looking at that exterior footprint, exterior sheathing of the cooler, that cooler would be located outside the existing kitchen, making it a more efficient use of the interior space and no negative impact to the exterior space. There's no reduction in, in the setbacks on the site. Everything is really interior to the existing building configuration, that is. So all the existing buffer location setbacks, nothing there changes. It's purely just the mechanicals, relocation, the generator, and this cooler. So with that being said, I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone have questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So on the, the cooler part, will you have the ballards like you showed there, or are they not needed? I don't know how close the actual driveway is to this.
So staff is recommending, and the applicant had agreed, to simply keep the vinyl fence in that location so that the cooler would go behind the vinyl fence. They had not proposed ballards.
Okay, just picture of the chair. Can it possibly be raised in order to make, I know you, you said you wanted it raised to be level with the exterior of the building. So will it be a foundation like that one that raises it that much?
So the cooler itself will be raised on foundation so that it matches, there's an existing door location on that, on that photo. The finished floor of the building will be matched so that there will be a flush walking surface between the kitchen and the cooler. So there will be a concrete pad, very similar to a concrete pad that's currently behind that fencing right now to support the generator. That pad would be removed and new one be, be installed.
So do you know the height of that pad?
That height of that pad, I believe.
Is that what's qualifying for you to be above the flood plainway?
The, the pad elevation on the, and forgive me, first question would be, the pad elevation of the cooler would be approximately 164.7. So that would be the finished floor of the existing building. The pad elevation and the concern as far as the flood elevation would be the, would be the generator on the lower side. So there would be a pad mount and then a metal rack system that would get the generator up to that 161.7, making it the two feet above the flood.
Actually, to go back, so is this, what is the material on the outside of the refrigerator unit?
I, forgive me, I don't know that specifically.
It was on the brochure.
I was just wondering why, why, why you need to put a vinyl fence in front of the, what, in front of it, it's, you know, it's just like putting a vinyl.
That's probably the problem.
Exterior noise?
No, no.
Sure, I'll tell you why. Staff recommended the vinyl fence. We had not gotten a, an exact design elevation of the walking cooler. So we hadn't seen exactly what that color was going to be yet. Understand it's going to try and match the building, but since we hadn't seen one submitted to us, we recommended the vinyl, the fence.
So what do you think about it now?
The item on the, on the lower is, is an example of, so that doesn't necessarily match the, any of the elevation of.
How, how high is?
Of the building at all.
I thought their proposal said they were going to use the siding.
Yep.
And what is.
One, one person.
The color is in the proposal.
Bruce, go ahead.
That wasn't my question.
Is exterior of the cooler going to match, the exterior of the existing building?
Yes.
Okay, that's what Bruce was bringing up. So maybe there is no need for a fence.
So the intent, the applicant, again, just to reiterate for the record, Mr. Wolf would indicate that the, you know, that the walking cooler would match the exterior facade of the existing building.
Certainly something to say.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then for the record, we're, it's, we don't see the fence anyway, so.
No, that one we would.
In the current view, up in the left-hand corner, you see it.
Yeah, because that's where it's going to go, and that's facing.
I know, but the proposal says that fence is going to be removed.
Right, but staff recommended keeping it.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's what George said.
Well, it's not in the proposal to keep it, is it?
Correct.
Well.
Anyone else have comments?
I have another question. Kevin does too.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Go ahead.
I see the, clearly where the generator's being moved to, and I understand the HVAC stuff is over there now, but I don't see where that's moving to. Or is there enough room for all of it?
There, there is enough room. There are about half a dozen HVAC units behind that current screening. Many of them are either ineffective or not operational. So the intent is that those be consolidated, providing the additional room necessary for the relocated generator.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. So I'm back, back to the ballards. Now that I can see the parking lot, there actually is parking right next to where this refrigerator unit would be. And so maybe, you know, ballards would. And so maybe, you know, ballards would make sense so that people don't hit your refrigerator unit.
Operationally, that would be a service entrance, you know, really being limited access to staff. And with there being a vinyl fence there now, that hasn't been the concern, hasn't been the need. But again, operationally speaking, if there was ballers that would be necessary, I'm confident the owner would put them in because it would be his own staff on his own restaurant, his own needs. But right now, it's not a public, you know, public point of access. There hasn't been a need thus far.
Where do your supply trucks unload?
Supply trucks unload on plan left down that accessway. There is an entrance into the kitchen in that location as well.
Kevin, do you think that would change with the trucks unloaded?
Well, yeah, if they loaded in that little parking lot there, then it would make sense to have a ballard there just because you don't want a truck running into your freezer unit.
I would defer to the owner at that point if he believes there would be ballers that would be necessary. I'm sure that that would be a willing addition to the to the plan.
Good evening. My name is Helmar Wolf. Yeah, that parking essentially is only for two cars, which is for management. Because at night, when they're locking up, that's the door they exit, and when they come in in the morning, that's where they enter. So there was no unloading of trucks or anything. That's further on the left side towards the east.
Even with a new cooler there?
Yeah, the new cooler is essentially there. It doesn't have any access from the outside.
So then what did you have loaded there?
The access is only from the inside.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Is anyone in the public here to speak to this application? Once? Maybe twice? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application twenty-two dash thirty-nine.
Second.
Second by? Who? You? Okay. Donna, got D's in the brain. Okay, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody abstaining? No, carries six, nothing. Public hearing is closed on application twenty-two dash thirty-nine. Okay, application twenty-two thirty-two, the Simsbury Zoning Commission is being continued from our prior meeting. Do we need to read the call? I don't think we need to read.
Does not require a new reading of the call.
Okay. So I open it up to commissioners, any comments that the commissioners would like to make in public hearing?
I'll just ask, was was staff able to get any of the research done that we asked for?
Staff has done some research. We have reached out to a number of different entities. We have not, we have not really received full comment or commitment back at this point. Remember, your hearing was two days before Thanksgiving and then that happened. So we certainly are going to need a little bit more time to get responses back, as you can imagine.
I, having watched the, well, attended in person later, watched the Board of Selectmen opportunity for public comment and the closing dialoguing between commission, Board of Selectmen members, it seemed like they were quite certain there would be a researching effort of some sort to satisfy their need for information. And I'm wondering if that's falling to you or is anybody working on that? And they also, Chris Peterson in particular, was very sort of concerned that we do some sort of teaming of interests or process or whatever on this matter. And worried that if we move before they do, then that's going to create some complexity that might be problematic. But you saw it, you heard it. We don't need to talk about it right now, but if, when we get to the next steps, I realize Wendy said, the first selectwoman, that we don't have a next steps plan. They got to go work one out. So again, my concern is if there could be duplication or killing two birds with one stone with the effort that you're putting in for research, if that could link up with what their needs are, but I don't know.
Okay, chairmen.
Perhaps the first selectperson will speak?
Public hearing, please.
Yeah.
Maybe the first selectman will speak and let us know how they're doing.
No, okay.
Yeah, it's public hearing.
Let's finish with the commission, then we can join you. You can make your speech.
It's not, it's not a speaker's speech. I just want to follow up on a comment I had provided at one of the hearings in the last hearings, is that after review of the bill itself, I realized that there is still one more stage left to go, or at least one more stage left to go at the General Assembly, which is that the Department of Consumer Protection is mandated to provide written recommendations to the General Assembly, including to the Judiciary and the General Law Commissions and one other commission regarding its written recommendations regarding onsite usage events at retail locations. So it would be my strong recommendation that whether it's the zoning commission or the Board of Selectmen, that, you know, we have those recommendations and understand what additional legislation may be coming down the pike from the General Assembly regarding onsite usage. Because I think that would impact or might impact the number and locations of retail sales in Simsbury.
Do you think that would be?
The written recommendations are due to the General Assembly by January one, 2023. So three weeks from now, two weeks from now, about that.
Okay, that affects our timing. Okay.
What they do with it after that, I don't know how long, you know, what, will there be legislation that comes out of those written recommendations? Anybody's guess?
Okay, anybody else on the commission's care to speak at this point? Before I open it up to the public? Okay. We'd like to have the public, anyone in the public who want to make comments, they want to state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to a few minutes so that everybody will have a chance to speak. With that, is there anyone in the public here to speak? Mrs. Cole.
Joan Cole, twenty-six. This is the most thing, it's not serious. So don't think that I have serious issues. I am against the increase in distribution of sale cannabis marijuana in Simsbury. David Murray from the Hudson Institute wrote, quote, "Colorado experiment legalizes marijuana's impact in Colorado," end quote. Not only did the promoted, promote its benefits, both financial and on behalf of public safety, not come to pass, but in multiple areas of daily life, the metrics have worsened. Moreover, the data from Colorado have been accompanied by several years of greater medical science awareness of the health risks from marijuana exposure. Easier access, greater prevalence, higher psychoactive potency from increased THC, a continued criminal element, and more intense daily use has all occurred since the experiment began, end quote. Venture capital is promoting the increase of sales in cannabis marijuana. Hot to current, quote, Connecticut venture capital fund is among the first institutional investors to jump into the growing cannabis business, committing one point two five million dollars to a manufacturer of edibles intended to enhance energy focus and mental health, end quote. Cureleaf LLC, located in Simsbury thirty-four Middle Street, headquartered in Wakefield, Massachusetts. Cureleaf has a presence in twenty-one states and owns and operates one hundred and forty-four dispensaries and twenty-nine cultivation sites with a focus on highly populated states, including Arizona, Florida, Illinois, Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. Millions of dollars of lobbying in lobbying efforts by venture capitalists will corrupt the system. According to the CDC, using marijuana can lead to the numerous adverse effects. Marijuana can significantly affect individuals' cognitive abilities, leading to poor memory and decision-making, loss of coordination, and difficulty learning. Impaired cognition can lead to participation in risky behavior and poor life choices that can have serious consequences. Marijuana leads to negative effects on major organs such as heart and lungs, and it causes rapid heart rates, increased blood pressure, and lung tissue damage. The substance increases the risk for the development of heart disease and stroke. Cannabis hyponesis syndrome is a condition of severe nausea and vomiting following marijuana use, which can cause abdominal pain, dehydration, esophageal inflammation, and perforation, poor nutrition, and tooth breakdown. Using recreational marijuana can also lead to psychological effects. The CDC describes a correlation between marijuana use and mental illness, including depression and anxiety. There can be both short-term effects, such as altered perception of reality and paranoid thoughts, on long-term complications. The most alarming finding of the state effects is that suicidal thoughts and attempts have been related to marijuana use. Marijuana is a mind-altering drug causing serious mental health issues that will cause pain and suffering for years to come. Andrew Glassman, Chair of Pullman and Connolly's Cannabis CBD and Hemp Practice, spoke to Fox sixty-one Morning News about new businesses, opportunities, and workplace policies on the first day of legalization of recreational marijuana in Connecticut. Andrew Glassman is the husband of Mary Glassman. Lawyers of venture capitalists should not set the policies for Simsbury. What is the position of the Board of Education, Police Department, and Social Services on this issue? I'm asking the zoning commission not to kick the can down the road. It is all about courage to say no to the sale and distribution of cannabis marijuana as twelve other towns have done. The zoning commission should follow the lead of the twelve towns, including Avon, and include a ban on the sale of cannabis marijuana in Simsbury. The increased distribution, sale, and use of cannabis marijuana in Simsbury should be banned by the zoning commission. And all of my comments and posts on Simsbury Patch and Twitter at Joan Cole. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Would appreciate if you could repeat last time. But it's okay. You'd like to speak, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Miriam Johnson, and I'm a resident of Simsbury.
What's your address?
Pardon?
Your address, please.
Three twenty Bushy Hill Road in Simsbury.
Thank you.
Everything she said, and this short added addition. Driving home in my car today, I overheard a news program stating currently in Colorado in the fact that poisoning calls to the poison control centers for leading to poisoning of small children is is up over three hundred percent. Also online, a very small addition to what she said is that nearly a decade after legalizing marijuana in Colorado, it continues to see an increase in calls to poison control and ER visits for accidental cannabis poisonings among children. That increase comes even after the state instituted preventative measures like child-resistant packaging, dose limitations, and restrictions on marketing and gummy products. As a mother and a grandmother, and if any of you have a child or grandchild, how you could even entertain the thought of allowing this to come into our town is beyond me. I I don't understand it. At the least, put it up for referendum to our town residents to be able to have a say, not your say, but the town residents who voted you in to decide whether or not this should go through. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to speak to this? Arthur Rinaldi.
Mike Rinaldi, Pinnacle Mountain wrote, a couple of weeks ago, I came here and tried to differentiate what what is meant by medical marijuana and marijuana for medical uses. Five or six years ago, you had a text amendment to zoning to allow Cureleaf to grow marijuana for medical purposes. Recently, the state of Connecticut modified Cureleaf's license, as well as a number of other growers, to not only grow marijuana for medical purposes, which there are very few of any, but for recreational purposes. I think you should review your text amendment and make sure that it was for medical purposes only and not for recreational purposes. Right now, the state of Connecticut has modified all the growers' licenses, upgraded them to include recreational marijuana. I do not believe we should do that. If we only approved marijuana for medicinal purposes, we should not approve for recreational purposes. Thank you.
I actually have a question I wanted to ask.
Sure.
Is there a difference between the marijuana grown for medicinal or medical, or excuse me, for recreational or medical?
I don't know that we have an answer to that, Tucker. Maybe we could ask staff to research it. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Ryan Shore. I live at two zero six Fire Town Road. This is a discussion of safe access. It means giving adults a safe way to access cannabis that they're going to buy anyway. It also achieves two goals that every person in this room wants: crushing the black market to reduce crime and reducing the likelihood that children will get their hands on it. The state of Connecticut, like twenty other states, a U.S. territory, and the nation's capital, has legalized the personal use of cannabis by adults for any reason. That's not going to change. That means everywhere in the state, adults can possess and use cannabis. No town can prohibit that, not even Simsbury. Since adults are going to continue to use cannabis, as they have been doing illegally for so many decades, they're going to buy it somewhere. If there is demand and no store in which to buy it, a black market arises. This is what we failed to control over the past eighty-five years. Eighty-five years of hoping in vain that people would stop using cannabis simply because we made it illegal. And as anyone who has used it recently knows, there's no good reason for it to be illegal for adults to use, which is why they've kept using it. Tonight, we're talking about allowing a store to open in Simsbury, to provide safe access to cannabis for adults, an environment in which the product is regulated and marked with drug facts, where there are no other harder drugs being sold, where there is police protection in the case of a potential crime occurring. Regulated stores provide legal, safe access to adults. Less black market means a lower likelihood of crime, a lower likelihood of sales to children, a lower likelihood of potentially laced poisonous or otherwise dangerous product. And remember, we're talking about a product that is not capable of killing humans or their pets, even infants, not physically addictive like tobacco, alcohol, cocaine, or opiates, does not induce, but in many cases inhibits, violent behavior, and legal to use in Connecticut and to any other states, a U.S. territory, and the nation's capital. Is it worth sacrificing safe access in a vain attempt to curb use and allowing the black market a greater opportunity to proliferate? But the actual question is, should we allow a store near the movie theater, a place where children will see it? I don't know if it really matters where it goes, as long as it's not near a school, which it would not be. But what message does that give to our children? It's a message that some things are for adults, and they can wait until they're older, just like the liquor stores on Hot Meadow, just like the two smoke shops on Hot Meadow, one of them which is in the same shopping center Starbucks, where I see middle school children walk every single Friday. Cannabis is not going to be illegal for adult use anytime soon, and we need to provide safe access to it for all the right reasons. I'm in favor.
Thank you very much. Mr. George.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Louis George, I represent Cureleaf. I just want to answer the question that was raised by Commissioner Sol, and that is the product that is grown medicinally is exactly the same that is the product that is grown recreationally, and the operation doesn't change at all. So there's no difference in their operation, whether they're grown medicinally or recreationally. So you want to clarify that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I am Lori Boyko from 15 O'Kearst Road in Simsbury. For several meetings now, we've heard impassioned pleas centered around an emotional issue. I watched many of the meetings back again. There were a couple of thoughts that came to mind that I felt needed to be raised, so I'm here again tonight to bring us back to a couple of central concerns. The sale of recreational marijuana has been legalized in Connecticut. That is a foregone conclusion, so this is not the issue before this commission. Any adult of legal age will be able to purchase and use cannabis and THC products. If we as a town choose not to allow a venue for sale here, users can readily purchase whatever they want in West Hartford, Canton, or Bloomfield, or another nearby town. No harm, no foul, plenty of access. The only issue is, they might have to drive five more minutes. As for Simsbury, what do we gain by allowing it? A little more tax revenue? We don't even know if that would be a net gain after the costs associated with it. I have yet, in all of this testimony, to hear a compelling reason to allow a retail outlet in our town. As our elected representatives, I believe it is incumbent upon me to weigh the benefits and risks to the town holistically, not just financially, and I haven't heard a single reason we should affirmatively allow this. If it's just some yet-to-be-determined tax revenue, this town voted to spend millions of dollars to maintain open space, to keep our bucolic community. For many reasons, we didn't even allow Target. Believe me, there was a lot more convenience that was to be had by having a Target. This year, the Board of Selectmen also designated this a recovery-friendly community. Is this in keeping with that designation? Were it not for the state and the way they worded the law, the commission would need to vote to approve such a business, not to ban. Do we want our town to be a drug dispensary destination? As I've said, I haven't heard reasons the commission would or should vote to approve, and some of that may be a result of the fact that there hasn't been enough due diligence done. I've heard many more questions by both the Board of Selectmen members and zoning members than seems reasonable to elicit a vote. Why not keep a ban until we all have a clearer idea of the very real risks? We can always approve it later when we see what's going on in other towns and that it's not been a problem. Lastly, I would ask a simple question. If we as a town do allow this, we want benefits from this, and to what extent? A single business entity in a location that can be handed off to a different business owner if the first owner decides not to continue? Investors? Venture capitalists? Big corporations? Or the residents of the town who are working hard and raising their families in a community we chose to live in because of the environment that we've created over centuries? And do the yet-to-be-seeing benefits outweigh very concerning risks? Or will the commission just rubber-stamp it because the state said it's okay? Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to this issue? Going once?
I have a question.
Question, go ahead. This is not for questions. This is a comment on the application.
Okay. I just want to add to my comments.
You want to add to your comments? Okay, you may add to your comment.
Could you stay up?
Yes.
Joan Coe, 26th Street. I'm concerned about how you're going to pay for the cannabis that you purchased in these stores. According to all information that I have read, the banks will not accept any money because it's considered an illegal drug as the federal government, who banks federally take care of under the federal government. So the question is, are we going to have, if we decide to have the sale, have a business with money that cannot be put in a bank, that cannot be put anywhere? What are they going to do with the money? I don't know how you just get rid of the money in your store and where you save it and what the distribution of the money is, and how do you pay for something if they won't accept money? So I think we have to talk about that, too, and maybe Curaleaf can tell us what they're doing with their money, I don't know. But you cannot bank it, and that's the issue in the cannabis business. So I suggest you try to get some information on that before you decide, because money that's sitting around is open for theft. So we can have gangs coming in and trying to tuck bank. Why do people hold a bank? Because there's money. Why do people go to the store, to the cannabis store? Because there's money. That is another issue that should be determined before you decide to do anything about it. It should be banned. We don't need a criminal element in Simsbury, that is.
Thank you again. Anyone else care to speak? Going once? Going twice? Going three times? Okay. Fellow commissioners, I think it would be appropriate for us to continue this public hearing process, and I think we should continue it to January 5th, when people will be more out of the holiday spirit and more serious. And so I would like to motion to continue with this hearing.
Let's check that date, correct.
To our next meeting.
You want to continue to the January?
January 4th?
Yeah. Your January schedule is a little hunky, given the news made in New Year's, and you moved your two dates to the 4th and the 18th.
Yep.
Correct. Sorry about the 5th. Don't take my dates seriously.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the public hearing on application 22-32 until our regularly scheduled meeting on January 4th, 2023, at the Simsbury Public Library.
Do you want to tell this location?
Do I hear a second?
Awesome. Go ahead.
No, Diane.
I'll second.
Okay, Diane, seconded. Further discussion?
I just want to say that I've had a lot to think about over the last couple of meetings, and I would really hope that maybe we can have some sort of information from, like, actual facts from other towns for them, because we can keep getting people's opinions. I'm fine with that, but at some point, we have to try to back it up with some facts and say...
George has been working on that.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I would hope that...
We intend to back.
Yeah.
Nobody's currently actively selling cannabis.
In Connecticut, but we do have Massachusetts, Maine.
Right, but there are other neighboring towns, I mean, neighboring states that maybe... I don't know.
So we'll work on this.
Yeah, so that's all I'm saying is, you know, I would have a hard time, at this point, with all of this information that I've been hearing, making a real decision until I can get some kind of information.
That's a good reason to keep the public hearing open.
So yes, I would agree. Yes, let's keep it open.
Okay.
Well, wait a second.
Go ahead. Bruce, you got a comment?
We don't need a public hearing to hear research developed by our staff.
But to have it entered into the record, we do. That's what I was talking about.
I doubt it, but I'm not an attorney.
Well...
And the public may have additional comment after they hear from the staff as well.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's good to keep it open, anyway.
And we'd like to be able to hear from the Selectmen.
Agreed.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? None? So the public hearing is continued to January 4th. Thank you. Okay, next order of business is application 22-37 of Ethel Walker School for a site plan amendment pursuant to Section 3. Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, town staff. My name is Tom Nelson. I'm a professional sibling here with SLR located in Chester. With me this evening is Tom DiMartino, the facilities director at Ethel Walker School. We're here before you tonight to talk about a site plan amendment to construct a new 75,000-gallon water storage tank at the Ethel Walker School. It's actually on the west side of Bushy Hill Road, up the hill. Yeah, there we go, there's a nice area of photos. Let's see where my best star is, is where the tank site is located currently. There's currently three water storage tanks at that location and a pump station. The Ethel Walker School operates their own water system that serves the majority of their campus. Of those three water tanks, two are active. One is out of service, was taken out of service a few years ago due to its age and it started leaking. So this 75,000-gallon tank is part of the school's water system master plan. It will be identical to the 75,000-gallon tank that we constructed back in 2016. So we'll have two tanks, both same color, same height, same manufacturer. It's a glass-fused to seal bolted tank, so it's forest green, which is what was recommended by the town back in 2016, so we're going to match that color. The tank that we're removing, the 30,000-gallon concrete tank, is, like I said, hasn't been used in a few years. We're going to be removing that, and in its place will be constructed this new tank. So it's 36 feet in diameter, 12 feet tall on the vertical sidewall, plus the slope of the geodesic dome. So this tank site is located back quite a ways off of Bushy Hill Road. It's up behind a hedge row of tall pine trees, and it's right on the edge of the forest there. So it's tucked away. It's on the, like I said, the west side of Bushy Hill Road, which is where they have their, the school's equestrian facilities. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission might have.
The proposal made a couple of references to 110,000-gallon tank. Is that the one you're referring to, has been retired, but it's still there?
Well, the three tanks that are there are the new 75,000-gallon tank, which will remain, the 30,000-gallon tank, which is out of commission and will be removed as part of this project, and the 110,000, which is currently serving the school along with the existing 75. That 110,000 will be abandoned in place. It's of similar vintage to the 30,000-gallon concrete tank. It's also a concrete tank.
Is it underground?
And it will be taken out of service, but it will be abandoned. It won't be removed. The two concrete tanks, although we can call them buried tanks, they're actually basically built on the ground, dirt mounded over them, and then grass planted on it. So it looks like a grassy knoll, if you will. But the 110,000-gallon tank will just be abandoned in place and disconnected from service.
Is there a reason you don't remove it?
Cost.
Do you service any of the houses that you own, that the school owns, or just...
Yeah, the school does have some faculty housing on the east side of Bushy Hill Road, kind of up and to the right on this map. As I mentioned, this water system serves the majority of campus. Some of those facilities down on the northwest corner of campus are served by the water company, by Aquari. So they do have some water meters in some of those buildings down there. I believe the faculty housing, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, the faculty housing is served by...
Well, there's three houses on Sandy Hill that we serve, so all the rest of our property's on Sandy Hill on the Aquari line.
What about the La Salle School? Is that serviced by you guys?
No.
Because it used to be owned by you guys.
This water system is just for the Ethel Walker School.
And so you have your own wells? Is that how it works?
There's one well out in the woods to the west of the tank site.
Out to the west what?
To the west of the tank site, that yellow star.
Oh, okay, yeah. There's a large aquifer out there, too, right?
I think it's a stratum.
Yeah, okay.
All right, and then the state kind of monitors your use of the well and the fact that you...
Yeah, it is considered a public drinking water system, and it is monitored by the Department of Public Health.
Good to know.
And the school does have a certified operator who runs the system. And we did receive DPH approval for this project.
Yeah. I thought the material we received was very comprehensive and thorough, and I really well-prepared for this one.
Glad to hear that.
Anyone else have any more comments? Donna? Diane? Are we ready to move on? Go ahead.
Motion. I move that we approve application 22-37 of Thomas Nelson, agent for the Ethel Walker School for a site plan amendment to construct a 75,000-gallon water storage tank. The property located at 267 Bushy Hill Road, Assessor's Map D15, Block 318, Block 007, Zone RF40. The commission finds the application for a site plan amendment meets the standards set in Section 11, Site Plan Requirements, subject to the following conditions. One, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with a site plan titled 75,000-gallon water tank at the Ethel Walker School, prepared by SLR and dated August 17, 2022. Tank color shall be forest green, consistent with the color approved in Simsbury Zoning Commission's Application 16-02. An administrative zoning permit is required for construction. Prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the applicant shall submit two sets of my wires for signature and recordation. And five, prior to the issuance of a certificate, the applicant shall submit an as-built plan for the improvements.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bruce. Tonight, the Design Review Board made a positive referral, again, affirming the color as forest green.
Well, there you go, then.
So, anyway, further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? It carries 6-0. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next application is P&amp;J McKenna, applicant for special exception to zoning commission for driving school.
Kevin's delegated this one to me, Dave. So...
Yeah, this is the whole, the whole, that's the same thing.
This is application 22-40 of Larry Atherton, owner, applicant.
No, no.
Oh.
Here, I'll have to go driving.
Oh, right. That's what happens when I listen to Kevin. Go ahead. Okay. This is application 22-38, related to 571 Hot Meadow Street. It's a special exception for the private driving school. Moved that the zoning commission approves application ZC 22-38 of J&amp;P McKenna, owner, applicant, TJ Donahue, agent, for a special exception pursuant to Section 4.5 of the Simsbury zoning regulations to permit a private driving school at the property located at 571 Hot Meadow Street, Assessor's Map G12, Block 103, Lot 038, Zone Professional Office. The zoning commission finds that the application for special exception has met the standards set in Section 12 for special exception requirements of the Simsbury zoning regulations, subject to the following conditions. Item one, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with a plan titled Parking Plan for J&amp;P McKenna LLC, dated 11/1922, prepared by Denno Land Survey. Item two, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction. Item three, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the applicant shall submit two sets of my wires for signature and recordation. End of motion.
Thank you.
I would like to add that they're going to surround the dumpsters.
And move if needed?
Pardon?
Do they have to be moved?
No, they're fine. It's just they need to be, well, supposed to be surrounded.
I'm sorry, you said you...
Item four would be to surround the dumpsters.
Enclosure?
Provide dumpster enclosure.
Private dumpster enclosure.
Private dumpster enclosure, okay. I understand that. Okay, do we hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Donna. Okay, further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? No, it carries six nothing. Thank you very much. The next application is Wolf Restaurant, twenty-two thirty-nine. Okay, comments by the commissioners?
No, but I will make one comment, I guess, that in the list of people that they have to notify, one of them was a trustee for eight hundred Hot Meadow Street, which is a Simsbury historic building. So, somehow there's a typo in there. I think it's probably six hundred Hot Meadow Street instead of eight hundred, but it doesn't really make a difference.
Oh, for the address?
Yeah.
Maybe because it's a historic building?
No, no.
He's just saying that the number was wrong.
The number, the street address was wrong, for the people within a hundred or two hundred feet, whatever we have to do. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but my understanding is nobody does anything with that. We just require that they submit. They're required to identify.
All the people that are in the neighborhood?
Abutters or, yeah. But nobody does anything with that list.
Oh, okay.
We just require it.
All we require is the posting on the property in lieu of the abutts.
Okay, any other comments about it? Are we ready for motion?
Is there anything?
This is mine.
Okay.
There you go.
Kevin's whispering over here.
All right, I move that the zoning commission approves application ZC number twenty-two dash thirty-nine of Wolf Restaurant LLC, Helmar Wolf, applicant slash agent, for a special exception pursuant to section six of the zoning regulations for site improvements in the floodplain zone at property located at four Hartford Road, assessors map G fifteen, block one four five, lot zero zero one, zone B one. The commission finds that the application for a special exception has met the standards set in section twelve, special exception requirements, and the floodplain zone requirements in section six of the Simsbury zoning regulations, subject to the following conditions. The property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the site plan titled Site Plan for Walk-In Cooler, dated eleven seventeen twenty-two, prepared by Barton and Le Judice. An administrative zoning permit is required for construction. Prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the applicant shall submit two sets of mylar's, mylar's for signature and recordation. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of completion, the applicant shall submit an as-built for the improvements. And I'm not sure if I need to say the fence.
I think we were going to maybe add that the exterior of the walk-in cooler should match the exterior of the existing building in lieu of that.
And so, yeah, five is the exterior of the walk-in cooler should match the exterior of the rest of the restaurant.
Did you want the fence for the generator area?
I think that was part of it.
That's in the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, it was.
Okay, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by the other end. Thank you, thank you, Kevin. Any further discussions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Six nothing, it carries. Thank you very much. Canvas text amendments is, oh, we got one more. Almost, almost.
Let's not forget this one.
Don't forget this one, this poor guy.
Already came to us once.
Okay. Application twenty-two forty of Larry Atherton, owner applicant. Is there someone here to?
I think Mr. Atherton is here.
Yeah.
Yes, please, come explain to us what you would like us to approve.
Yeah, Larry Atherton, twenty, Harvest Hill Road. Originally, I, we put in an application to do an accessory dwelling unit on the property. Had a hearing and we got some feedback from neighbors, and then decided to kind of switch due to just converting a two-car garage that I had there at the house to the in-law apartment. It's five hundred and forty square feet, so we withdrew that original one and now we're moving to this.
Right, okay. Anything from the staff?
No, I do have just a couple of pictures. I think it helps, kind of, do you want, you want to go ahead and walk them through, just kind of locationally?
Yeah. Yeah, so the garage, there's the garage, the entrance to the garage, there's a bedroom up here. Yeah, this is a way that kind of goes into the garage, it's just right there. And drive in, so we're just going to convert that.
What you use as main access to the house?
Sorry?
What do you use as the main access to the house? What will you use?
I use this, there's a door right here. There's a door going into the garage and that's going to be closed off. There's going to be a door created here where we take out.
Yeah, sorry.
We take out the garage doors, there's going to be a window and a door put in here. So, I know that there was supposed to be two areas of access, I forget the term.
Egress.
Egress. Door and then a window on the side is going to be that for the egress. And all the plumbing is going to be sort of closer to where the other one. So, up here where the master bedroom is, the bathroom is here, so all the plumbers will be right there. We've submitted an application to the Farmington Valley.
Health district.
Health district, just to kind of assessment if this existing septic system would meet the requirements, and it did. They came back and they approved it, so we don't have to do anything with that.
And that approval letter from the health district is in your package.
I do have a question on the, the new siding, I think it's the next picture.
Yeah.
Why did you go vertical instead of, the rest of the house, the siding is horizontal, and then that piece you did vertical?
Yeah, so that was actually just one of the recommendations that the architect had. They actually had two different recommendations on there. And sort of the problem that, that we're kind of running into from a siding standpoint is that, so we have existing siding up here, and then you have this little overhang that's here. You have stone, a brick and brick, and there's siding here, and then you have the two doors. Talked to a lot of contractors and the architect, trying to match the siding is going to be difficult. You get fading, it's older, not going to be able to get the same color, so we're saying this has to be different. Can't match the brick either, fading, all discoloration, so we have to figure out something to do. So, this was just one of the options that he threw out there. The other one was kind of doing something horizontal. Two of the contractors actually suggested doing kind of this fake stone siding, so that would just look like fake stone under here, which is probably what we're going to end up going with. And it's just going to cover the brick like all the way across, obviously except for the door and the window.
Is there, there's no window to the bedroom?
Yeah.
On the front, on the front.
No, not on this side.
Here's the bedroom and here's the window.
Yeah, but on this wall.
Yeah, on this one, no.
There's a door.
No, there's a door and the window, that's going to go into the living room, and yeah, that's going to be the bedroom. And we're going to have a window kind of going on the side.
Just on the side.
So, you're parking at least three cars now in the driveway?
Two.
Because you had a two-car garage.
Yeah. So, I have my truck and then my dad, who's going to be living in the car, and he has his car.
Yeah, you talked about where he parked last time.
There's a notch, right, there's a little bump out notch halfway down, right?
Yeah, because this, you can't really see it because of cars, they're just like a little notch here.
You had a picture of that in the previous.
Yeah, I remember that.
In the previous one, yeah, you can't see here, it's over there. So, yeah, I park in the garage, and we'll probably just park in that little notch now. We only have two vehicles. It's just myself and my boys fifty percent of the time. So, I'm divorced, so I don't have someone else's car there.
So, the window in the bedroom is actually the second, means egress?
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah, we got, I guess there was information that needed to be included for the architect from the, from the town to consider when building out the plans. We made sure we got that information so that we could provide it to the architect ahead of time. So, he read through and just made sure that he was sort of following the guidelines.
Okay, so what we're saying is the siding may not be what we see there.
So, let me just stress that. So, if it was, Mr. Atherton was converting his garage, just because he was converting his garage, we wouldn't normally, we wouldn't review design details, and so, this is, the use is what, is what the request is here. And so, we felt that conditioning a particular design wouldn't apply to a regular homeowner, and so, staff wouldn't recommend it for an eighty-year.
Wouldn't make the recommendation regardless of what was proposed? Is that what you're saying? It's outside of the scope.
The staff reported, they expressed no preference in the design. Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and what went into the blueprints was just kind of some recommendations. And one of the pages has the, so we have the vertical and then there's the horizontal. There was just a couple, though we hadn't sort of settled anything.
Yeah, the other design is in your files, sir.
Okay. Any other comments? Anne?
Oh, there's no kitchen facility at all.
There is, there's going to be a kitchen.
There is.
Yeah, in the, in the plan, you see the kitchen. So, here's the bathroom, the bathroom, the bedroom, this is all going to be open living room, dining room, kitchen.
Okay. Then you really enlarged your plans for the first time.
Yeah, so the first one.
That was like two hundred and eighty square feet.
Yeah, your dad's living large now.
But this is only, this is, I think, five hundred and forty. Yeah, so it falls within the threshold that you established, that you established in the last amendment.
Yeah, so it definitely did, it expanded for him.
Go down.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Are we ready to make a motion? Who's turn is?
It's Donna.
Donna's.
Oh, you're okay.
Um, so, application twenty-two forty, twenty, Harvest Hill Road, attached accessory dwelling unit. Moved, the zoning commission approves application ZC twenty-two dash forty of Larry Atherton, owner applicant, for a site plan pursuant to section three of the Simsbury zoning regulations to allow a five hundred and forty-square-foot accessory dwelling unit at twenty Harvest Hill Road, assessors map D ten, block one thirty-three, lot zero seven three, zone R forty. The commission finds that the application for a site plan has met the standards set in section three point five point two, accessory dwelling, accessory buildings and uses, and is subject to the following conditions. One, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the plan dated eleven two twenty-two, prepared by Valerio Giadone, architect, sheets A one to A three. And two, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction.
I'll second.
Second by Donna, Eric Diane. Further comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? It carries six nothing. Thank you very, very much. Okay, now we're reaching down to the whole business section. We have nothing under the application twenty-two dash thirty-two, except if people have questions. Anyone have questions of George on the things that we're doing? I know that George is reaching out to people to try to get information by the January meeting. We may even have some people come.
Great.
Bruce?
I'm all for it, but let me just raise this point again. The idea of leaving the public hearing open for months while we continue to solicit and digest information, I think that's why, another scenario that can be used is just have another public hearing. You close this one, because everybody had something to say at their time.
No, then we have to act on the application.
Then you have to what?
We have to act on the application.
If we post it.
Repost it.
There's no problem keeping it open.
Yeah, remember, you really just.
I know, but at the beginning of every meeting, or every meeting we're going to see on the agenda.
I suspect it.
I've never heard of that, I mean.
Come January, you'll have a sense of what you want to do.
Well, they opened it for two weeks alone.
Well, I do remember our friends in Canton were trying to deal with the guy who was going to, who we know well, Mark Greenberg, wanted to remove the top of that mountain over there. And they had a continuation of a public hearing that went for several months, so.
Okay. We're not going forever, but I think going three or four.
I'm going to be here anyway, so.
Right. We're all retired and ready to go right through.
Okay.
Okay, before we, and I'd like one, suggest one thing that we cancel the December thirteenth, nineteenth. I got the date right?
You got it, Rick.
Zoning commission meeting.
I'm curious with that. In which case, I believe this will probably be my last zoning commission meeting. I'll be doing other things on January fourth during the day, so.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Congratulations, again.
And thank you, everybody here. It's amazing how much, much time and effort and energy this commission devotes to trying to make Simsbury the best town it can be. And I'm really impressed with the dedication the zoning commission made this year. So, thank you, everybody.
Okay, do we need to do a motion or do we just say we're not going to have a meeting?
I'd go ahead and make a motion. I think you'd better have it on the record, yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion to?
Yeah, you have to, Anne.
Oh, Anne.
You have to make a motion to cancel the.
I will very happily make a motion to cancel the December nineteenth meeting, which would be Christmas weekend.
Yes. Do we hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bruce. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Now, it carries six nothing. So, we'll see everybody in January.
Well, here, let's, I just wanted to raise another issue that, you know, under general business, that it's my sense that when we gather again, our project down there across from the Weetac Firehouse with the Silverman Group is going to be in default. They were promised to get their building, the shelling of that building done by the end of the year. I'm not a construction expert, but it's obvious to me.
It's not working.
Yeah, that isn't going to happen. They're not going to be done on December thirty-first. And I'm not going to editorialize about the effort that went on there over the last several months, or didn't go on over the last several months, but my question can be answered, I guess, on January fourth, but is there any reason that we shouldn't be thinking about this as, they're in default on January first?
Staff is following the issue closely and will report at your first meeting.
But it can't possibly be done for December thirty-first. There's no walls. There's concrete work that's not done, it's only three weeks away. So, your response is that you'll provide some information, or you hope to provide information in January on the status of that project that will not have met the deadline that they offered.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going to bring that up, but I forgot.
Did I hear something?
A second.
Second, second to an unheard motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah. Happy holidays, everybody.